We're not sure how open they actually are. We haven't talked to him yet. You mean it's not very populated? Yeah, we get worried when we have planning hearings and the room's not full of people.
Well, he's in Florida.
In Florida. I think he was seeking Trump's endorsement. Okay. Got that in another way.
That's three seconds.
Are we ready? Okay. It's 1:30. It's time in our schedule for a planning hearing. We have two files today. The first one is AM zero zero, excuse me, AM zero zero two three dash two one and ZC zero zero three three dash two one. And the second one is file ZC zero zero three nine dash two one. And before we get going here, is there anybody that has hearing or visual impairments to give you some help? As I always get a kick out of this because I then I use the joke a lot, but if you have a hearing impairment, how could you hear me ask to be had a hearing impairment? Seen none. Call for conflict of interest.
Commissioner Conley has no conflict, although I have known the one applicant most of my life.
I bet he feels bad about that.
Yeah.
We won't hold it against.
It's a day to day thing.
Okay. And Commissioner McDonald, I have no conflict. For those that haven't been in a in a hearing before, we'll go over the the process really quick. Staff's going to present. The applicant's going to go ahead and give an overview of his project, his or her project, or the applicant's representative, or both. We'll then open it up for public testimony at any time during any of this. Commissioners can ask questions. Public testimony always goes support first, then neutral, then opposition. We never have neutral, so I don't know why we still have that in there. Wish we could remove that. We will then go, well, the information there as far as public comment, three minutes. I don't know if it's going to be a big issue today. Then we'll have rebuttal, time for rebuttal, and then we will close. Bring you further public testimony and the commissioners will deliberate for the record. Commissioner Conley and Commissioner McDonald and President Commissioner Bradshaw's at excused. Wow. Wow, he's absent, absent to be right. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to staff to start the first file.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Daniel Britt, planning staff for the record. We're here this afternoon to discuss a comprehensive plan map amendment and a zone change. We'll start off with the evaluation. Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash two one six. Ask staff and the governing bodies to review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal and determine whether there's adequate evidence in the proposal to move forward with the application and aligns with the general specifics of the comprehensive plan. Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash three twenty offers us purpose statements for each zoning designation, which allows us to take the application guided through the code. So little, we're going to discuss the map amendment first and then the zone change. So little background on this particular parcel. There is two single family dwellings. It is unplanted and it's just over a half an acre. It is currently zoned rural five and it has a land use designation of rural residential. Properties access on Luby Ray, Luby Bay Road, which is a Bonner County owned and paved travel way. Some environmental factors that are on this property numb or present. There's nice slopes or wetlands. It's not on a waterfront. Services that are provided to this particular parcel is cow's bill, a water and sewer for the water and sewage. Fire protection is provided by West Priest Lake Fire District. Powers provided by Northern Lights Utility Company is within school district number eighty three. There's one soil type found on this property and it is not prime farmland. These are the agencies that were routed. We did receive one comment from DEQ letter recommendations that are attached to the staff report. Following seven other agencies responded with no comment and the remaining did not respond. No public comments were received on this file. Applicant is proposing a comp plan map amendment from rural residential to resort community for the purpose of being able to provide dormitory style employee housing. So the current, the proposed comprehensive plan map amendment, currently it is rural residential. The criteria for that is the rural residential area provides for residential development in areas where urban services are not available. Slopes may vary up to thirty percent. These areas include hazardous, hazard areas such as avalanches, prone to slides, critical wildlife habitat, or lower density, reduce potential impact and exposure to loss of property. The designation designation for this afternoon that they're pursuing is the resort community. Within the resort community, we look for provides urban like service density for areas centered around recreational areas developed for winter and water sports, golf, hiking, and where urban services are provided. So as previously mentioned, they want to be able to pursue a conditional use permit for employee housing. So employee housing is permitted in all zoning districts by code. One challenge with this is the employee housing has to be on the same site as the business itself. If you look at the area in the blue, that's where the golf course is. If we look at the area in yellow, that's where the parcel is. These parcels are not divided by the road. They are, they're separate parcels on their own. Therefore, employee housing on the parcel is not allowed because it does not have a business. So the findings of fact for the comp plan map designation, slopes are absent on this property. Critical wildlife was not identified by Idaho fishing game. Urban services are available to this parcel. Recreational activities are surrounding this parcel and most surrounding parcels in the area are sub five acres currently. On to the zone change. This is from rural five to recreation. Zone change request will allow for the applicant to pursue a conditional use permit for a hostel to accommodate for seasonal employees. So we look at note thirty two in the commercial use table to pursue the employee housing associated with the business. You would have to get a conditional use permit and note thirty two directs us to housing shall be an owner manager supervised. It may consist of dormitory style, separate family, separate or family sleeping quarters, food service facilities, water supply and wastewater disposal. And you'll have to sue that conditional use permit if he's able to rezone the property to recreation today. This is the current zoning of the area. Up towards the top of your screen here, we see the parcel itself in question. This is the golf course here in the red that's on rec currently. These are the standards of review. To look to see where the land's appropriately zoned or not. So it's currently R five. An R five in areas designated rural residential in the comp plan that are already developed at or near one dwelling unit per five acre density. I do not meet the criteria as for our ten. Our tens are really part of the conversation today since it's already zoned our five. So we look at the land and the recreational district guides us through is the land physically suitable to accommodate a broad range of residential recreational uses? Answer is yes. Is there adequate sewage disposal and and services available to this parcel? Yes. Water supply is provided. It is accessed by standard roads and it does have access to other public facilities and services. These are the findings of fact. They have not changed since the time of the staff, staff report was prepared. Conclusions of law have not changed since the time the staff, staff report was prepared. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and Bonner County Revised Code. Planning and zoning commission voted unanimously for approval of this proposal. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions.
Okay, Commissioner, 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 not Commissioners. Do you have any question? Do you have any questions for staff?
I think I'm good.
Yeah, I think I'm fine as well. Does the applicant wish to say a few words? Craig, if you come to the stand and just identify the stand, the mic, come to the stand, approach the bench, come to the mic and identify yourself for the record.
Hi, Craig Hill, from Hills Resort at Priest Lake and owner of Priest Lake Golf Course. The need for, our need for this is that same as everywhere in Bonner County, we're out of housing for employees. And this one piece of property, it's, it's adjacent to property that was owned by the golf course and it's walking distance to the resort. So we can hire employees from out of the area that don't have a car and they can walk to work either to the golf course or to Hills Resort. We've owned this property probably for five or six years now and we've used it as employee housing. It currently has a trailer on it that was put there in the nineteen seventy two, I think, is when that trailer went in. And the, the property is big enough to put a real current energy efficient dorm style building on it, which will house more than the two or three people that can live in the little trailer that needs to go to the dump. Anyway, that's what that's the reason that we need the additional employee housing is basically because it's close and the employees can get to work. Anyway, I, that's about all I can come up with.
Yeah, and I have a question.
Do you have any questions?
I do have a question for you. Why do I lose so many balls on your course? What's up with that? Just kidding. The target might be my golf game sucks. I don't know.
Keep your head down.
Yeah. That's it. I always want to see where it goes.
Anything else? Any questions?
Water, but the water doesn't come from the calist.
No, there's a well. There's a well on that site.
Okay. Okay. With no more, no further questions for staff or for the applicant, we'll go ahead and move into public comment. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in favor? Okay, anyone neutral now? Okay, anyone opposed? Is there anybody online? Oh, this is going to be a slow day. Okay. Well, with that, there's no, there's what? There's, there's no need for a rebuttal. So we'll go ahead and go into deliberation. Go ahead, Jeff. I'll let you start this one.
Yeah, I think I'm just talking to some folks about this last night.
Oh, excuse me, before we start, we need to take up the comp plan first. So let's talk about why we're for or against comp plan and then we'll go to zone change.
Yeah, I think that I talked about this last night a little bit with some folks about how I think that the answer is partially for affordable housing is probably employer held housing because I mean these, we just can't seem to get any housing in the area that that the workers can afford. So I think that this is exactly part of the solution. It's not the whole solution. I, I know the property. I, I mean, I know the area well and it's suited.
Okay. Yeah. And looking at the, the overall comp plan map, I, you know, we've got, we do have resort community near, not adjacent. However, I look at this parcel as part of, of the operation that's going on in the area that is resort community. So I can support that, especially when we start talking about employee housing. I think it's the new wave of the future based on what we see with the overall lack of housing in Bonner County. So let's talk quickly about the zoning. What are your thoughts on zoning?
Yeah, I think with it being residential use, I think it fits into the recreational zone. Obviously, it's right across the road. Nearly broken up by one little small parcel. And I think that, I think that this is probably a more adequate zone than our five for sure.
Yeah, I think under the zoning portion, I think it, it meets all the criteria for recreation. It doesn't necessarily meet the criteria for our five zoning. So I, with that, I would have to agree that zoning this recreation makes the most sense, especially including what you said, the, the proximity of other recreational zoning. So with that, I will entertain a motion on, on the comp plan amendment.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this project file AM zero zero two three dash two one for a comprehensive plan amendment from rural residential to resort community, finding that it, that it is in accord with the general and specific objective of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and the Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Having the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties, this action does not result in the taking of private property.
And I will step down from the chair in a second. Roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll go ahead and entertain the comprehensive plan map resolution adoption.
You have a
Do you have a number?
Thirty six. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty six, amending the Bonner County projected land use map.
And I will step down from the chair and second that all in, or roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You know, let's move on to the zone change.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, the number to be assigned citing authority and providing for an amendment of the official zoning map of Bonner County by the reclassification of lands located in section twenty four, township sixty north, range five west, Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho, from rural five to recreation and providing for an effective date. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the official supplementary zoning map upon publication of the ordinance.
Okay. I will step down from the chair and second that. Roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And then last, the zone change motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this project file ZC zero zero three three dash two one, requesting a zone change from rural five to recreation, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And the Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report and direct the planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion, have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Okay, and I'll step down from the chair and second roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
And with that, that concludes that file. And we'll go ahead and move on to ZC zero zero three nine dash two one. Staff may begin whenever they are ready.
But you can stay if you wish.
All right, see ya.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Daniel Britt, planning staff for the record. We're here to discuss a zone change from AF twenty to AF ten. On a counter revised code twelve to sixteen. Asked us to review the application submitted in front of us to make sure it's in accordance with the general and specifics of the comprehensive plan and Bonner County Revised Code. Twelve dash three twenty point one offers us purpose statements to help us guide that application through this process. So the purpose statement for the F district. Agricultural forestry district, district is established to provide for ag and forestry pursuits. Purpose of the F district is to preserve, protect and maintain areas that are rural in character and the integrity of the forest with woodland and where viable agricultural pursuits can be feasible and to avoid fragmentation of forests and farms. Applicant has proposed his own change from AF twenty to AF ten for the purpose of building a single family dwelling and obtaining a conditional use permit for an RV park. Proposed zone change will remain within the current comprehensive designation by designation of ag forest land, ten to twenty acres. They have district has two designations. It has they have twenty and they have ten, which this request was reviewed against. So a little background on these three parcels. They are developed with the residents. A lot of them is, I believe. They're all unplatted. That was approximately fifty two acres. It's currently zoned AF twenty with a land use designation for ag forest land. Access to these parcels is mosquito creek road, lower mosquito creek road. Both are Bonner County owned and maintain gravel surfaced travel ways. So a few environmental factors for this proposal. The sites do contain map slopes. They do contain map wetlands. There is a stream running through the southern portion of this proposal. Services are available to and at the property. The properties currently are individual well, individual septic. Fire protection is afforded through the Clark Fork Fire Department. Powers provided by Vista Utilities is within the school district number eighty four Bonner County. We do find that there are five different soil types on these three parcels. Three are not prime farmland. One's prime farmland drained and one area is all private farmland. These are the agencies that were routed for comments. Army Corps of Engineers sent a letter recommendation. DEQ had no comments at this stage of the project. I don't fishing game sent a lengthy letter in as well with their recommendations. And now health also responded with recommendations and the city of Clark Fork had no comment. And all the other agencies did not respond. No public comment was received for this file. But these are the standards for the F district. AF twenty is we find, we look to see if there's prime agricultural soils. If the project is characterized by ag and forestry uses, if there's limited services to the parcels. If they're characterized by slopes deeper than thirty percent. If they're absent or limited to substandard road systems or where large tracts of large tracts of land are devoted to ag forest production. AF ten asks us to look to see that they don't have prime ag for soils. Pursuit ag and forestry pursuits still remain viable. They have ten asked with be within the city of impact or lands are afforded fire protection and has access to standard roads and other services. So we started looking at the parcels individually. We'll look at the parcel further to the north there that you see highlighted in turquoise. On the pride farm or sorry, prime ag soils only make up about twenty percent of this site. Wish I would put the, oh, the acreage is fourteen acres approximately. Is it limited services? It's not. Is it characterized by slopes deeper than thirty percent? It is. Access may be absent or limited to substandard roads. No, because mosquito creek road accesses this parcel. Large tracts of land are devoted to the production. Now, this large track land is typically a section which is six hundred forty acres. So then we look to see if it's appropriate for the AF ten. Approximately seventy three percent of this parcel is non-prime agricultural soil. Is within the city of impact, adjacent to the city of impact. It's afforded fire protection and it does have access to standard roads. Therefore, this parcel fits more appropriately with AF ten standards. So we look at the second parcel in this proposal. Approximately two point five percent of this property is covered in ag soils. Same thing. It doesn't have limited services. It's not characterized by steep slope and thirty, steeper than thirty percent. It does have sorry, access by a standard road system and large tracts of land are not devoted to ag forest use. We look at the AF ten designation as well. This site, nine, seven point five percent of the site area does not feature prime ag soils, but ag forestry pursuits remain viable on it. It too is within the area of city impact, is afforded fire protection and access to standard roads and other services. Southern parcel. Forestry and ag uses can be pursued on this as well. Thirty four percent of the site does not feature ag soils or sixty six percent does. So it does have prime ag soils. But once again, it's afforded fire protection, access standard roads and is within the area of city impact. So when we look at the project as a whole, it fits better with AF ten designation as opposed to the twenty. Findings of facts haven't changed since the staff report was prepared. Either have the conclusions of law. Staff has found that this proposal is consistent with Bonner, Bonner County Revised Code and planning zoning commission unanimously recommended approval on this project. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions, Commissioners.
Commissioners, have any questions for staff?
Just a couple little things that are, that I found when I was reading through this. It says, though there is excessive slopes found on the parcel, there are areas which will be safe to develop. This allows hazard, hazardous well, to be avoided, I guess. It has an R in there too, but and then when you go into the applicant application, it said the site is gently sloping with estimated maximum slopes of less than fifty percent. Can somebody clarify which it is?
In the case of the staff report.
Yeah, I think it's the northernmost piece of that has got slope, but the rest of it really is bottom of the
Right. So if we look at the proposal as a whole, which we did in this situation, it is not characterized by slopes deeper than thirty percent. For the proposal.
Okay. But because it
Because when you look at this.
In the, in staff proposal, yeah, I know.
That little piece.
Staff proposal that says one thing and then in the application it says different things. Just want to clarify. And then one other on the application, but that's probably for you to echo it. I'll ask applicants.
Okay. Okay, so if the applicant's representative wishes to come forth and regale us with his presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is the planning department. Travis Howler with Glee Professional Land Surveyors as the project site owner representative. It's all yours. Thank you, Daniel. I'm just trying to get to where all right, just trying to get this where I can maneuver. Um, yeah, zone change. As we all know, this is one of the easiest zone changes when you go from ag forest twenty to ag forest ten. As the comp plan shows, this is just a zone change. The comp plan is not changing. So there we go. So just for the record, this is kind of where the property is in relationship to the surrounding majority to standpoint and the, and the lake. So we're over in Clark Fork. We're up mosquito creek road. So off to the left there, you have the proposed and the current. So ultimately, we're here because we want to create an additional lot out of the current three lots and reconfigure those lot lines to best suit the applicant and what their ideas are for the future. So for the Commissioners, that the idea is to keep all this within the family. Half of this is also owned by the clients. Half of this is also owned by the client's brother in law, under deed. So. David over there, he owns half and his brother in laws, the other half, him and his wife. So they want to keep it in the family and essentially make a family compact. So make it also sustainability. And that's where the RV park kind of comes in. You know, uh, maybe a dozen RV spots, you know, some summertime. Family meetups, that kind of thing on the property. So the zoning map and then I also expanded it so you can see what. We're in this great area of, you know, you have the ag forest twenty, which we're in, where you join ag forest ten to the to the west. And then there's also rule five to the north. In the square boxes, you actually see the parcel sizes. Right? So so the top one were fourteen, the middle were currently twenty and the bottom is eighteen. We're trying to get to ten. So you can see how that would work out. But even to the joining side, you have the ag forest ten zone, the light green. And those are all twenty acre parcels with the six there at the bottom. And then further to the west, you have a large parcel. So so it's all. You know, there's no consistency, I guess, is the point I'm trying to get at. We all know the county code. David did a great job hitting that. Force twenty requirements versus the ag force ten. And so this is. Commissioner Conley, you had mentioned a little difficult, but yeah, that top piece up there actually has really tight contours. So, uh, but I took this application and the idea with the zone change being across all three parcels. Correct me if I'm wrong, but could you guys pick and choose which parcel you wanted to approve a zone change for? I assume it was for the whole thing. So I looked at the project as a whole, all three instead of individual.
I've been scolded for suggesting that before.
Okay, I won't try that. I'm just asking questions. This is your guys'.
They created a whole other hearing.
So this is the soils. So you can see how they kind of play out there. The the majority of the right there in the middle, the five four five H is. Is the hoodoo silt loam and it's prime farmland if drained though. And so that's what we're. If drain is the stipulation that we're considering is not prime farmland under the designation. The services, they are there. This is the main one. The county maintain roads are there. The water availability. You can kind of see the little white dots there, one right below the eighteen, one off to the right and one up further up. And those are the GPS that each one of those wells produce. So. Because this is what is going to have to be under a well for water service, fire suppression services. David did go out and secure agreement with the Clark Fork Fire and Rescue. So it is afforded fire protection. And sewer obviously will get PhD when necessary. So the comparison, Daniel did a great job. This is the same thing as before. I made a mistake over in the proposed, the current off to the left, the proposed the ag forest ten. No prime soils. I turned that red, but I considered if drained being prime land, but it's not. So. Actually, the whole right column being proposed should be green. So in conclusion, uh, the subject of the site is already defined by the comp plan as ag forest lands. We're not changing the the, you know, the governing document that is. That we use for helping us answer these questions for, you know, zone change and. Ultimately, if a complaint is needed. Right there, you can kind of see my three bullet points for why this is better defined as ag force ten. But really, you know, every zone change request is unique and varies in site conditions. No two are the same. That's why we have these meetings. But the really, it comes down to the comprehensive plan guides us when making these decisions and when answering that question of. Which zone best represents the land, allowing it to best serve the public and the public interest. We have our definitions in the code, but I ultimately feel that's that's exactly what the comp plans for. And the zone change that we're applying for. And because of those three reasons, ag force ten just really fits and better than ag force twenty. That's all I got.
Okay, any questions for Travis?
I don't think so.
You want to actually see, want to divide these parcels?
Like to try a little. Make it look like a jigsaw puzzle. Never mind.
Okay, um, does the other wish to speak at all or? I don't, I don't think we have any.
And I guess it. To get to the RV park, really not what we're looking at. We're at a simple zone change. I'd love to ask some questions, but I won't. It's a conditional use permit application.
Uh, thanks Travis. So with that, we'll go ahead and move into public comment. Anyone for it hasn't already spoken? Nobody's online. Uh, nobody neutral, no one against. I don't know someone you guys want to swat, switch back and forth. Maybe she can be against you. Add a little bit of drama.
I want to see that.
We haven't seen a neutral yet. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and close and go into deliberation. Go ahead, Commissioner Conley. What do you got?
You know, I think that the questions that I had have been answered. It's a. It's a little bit different than, you know, what what we see sometimes, but one thing about it. Nobody could say that it doesn't match the zoning around it because it looks like it's got a little.
It's got a little bit of everything here.
So it's like, yeah, let's pick one. So I think that we hit that mark and. Moving forward, I don't see this as an issue. Yeah, that would be in favor.
Okay, yeah, and I'm going to agree. We've got a little mishmash of different types of zoning in here. We've got and plus it's within the area city impact. It looks like the services, especially for fire are covered. I don't see any reason why, especially based on staff's analysis with the checklist. And Travis's analysis as well with his nice little colored graph, which by the way, I refer the color graph. It's a little more festive. But it looks like it fits much better into AF ten than it does AF twenty. And so I would also. Move to approve. So I'll entertain a motion when you've got the chance.
Okay, and I'll just maybe make a comment to the defining zoning recommended. Unanimous. So. I thought we usually did the ordinance second, but no.
It's first in here.
It is up top.
Yeah, so let's do this.
I'll switch back to.
Yeah, do this unchanged motion first and then we'll go up to the.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this file ZC zero zero three nine dash two one requesting a zone change from agricultural. Agricultural forest twenty to agricultural forest ten, finding that it is in accord with the general. And specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and the Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of facts and conclusions of law as set forth with this staff report. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. The chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
And then I will step down the chair and second roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now on to these unchanged ordinance motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, the number to be assigned citing its authority and providing for an amendment of the official zoning map of Bonner County by reclassification. Of lands located in section one township fifty five north range two east Boise Meridian. Our county Idaho from egg forest twenty to egg forest ten and provide for an effective date. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the official supplementary supplementary zone zoning map upon publication of the ordinance.
And I will step down the chair and second that roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And with that, that concludes today's hearing. It is two oh eight and we'll go ahead and adjourn.